11th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Tonight's meeting will be held in person in the chamber and also on Zoom. As Chair, I'll be leading the Commission and the public will be welcome to participate when invited. You can participate in person or online via Zoom. If you're on Zoom and experience audio problems, we suggest that you leave the meeting and then rejoin. That usually fixes it. Additional information on how to participate via Zoom is on our website, Burnsville.gov. As usual, the meeting is also available on BCTV and the city website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. The Zoom ID is 880-0953-4838. We should put up a slide that has that number on it. Just a thought. I don't know if that's possible. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you'd like to speak to. You can also call into the meeting. The telephone number for phoning in to Zoom is 651-372-8299. And again, that meeting ID is 880-0953-4838. For each item that has a public hearing, I'll open up a time when the callers may speak and we can guide you with more instructions at that time. If you're speaking on the phone, please mute your computer so that there's no delay. So now we're onto the agenda. So the first item on our agenda is the swearing in of a new Commissioner, John Hamilton. Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Who will be leading the swearing in ceremony?
I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
John, I'll have you just stand where you're at there. And you can raise your hand and repeat after me. "I, John Hamilton, do solemnly swear..."
"I, John Hamilton, do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota."
"...and faithfully will discharge the duties as a member of the Burnsville Planning Commission of the City of Burnsville."
"And will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Burnsville Planning Commission and the City of Burnsville."
"...in the County of Dakota and State of Minnesota."
"In the County of Dakota and the State of Minnesota."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Hamilton.
Thank you.
Item number two is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff?
No changes.
And are there any changes to the agenda from Commissioners? Welcome, Commissioner Timmerman. Seeing no changes, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Braddock.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second from Commissioner Timmerman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been adopted. Item number three is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was August 14th. Any changes from staff?
No changes.
Any changes from Commissioners? Again, entertain a motion. Commissioner Wallace.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Braddock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimous. Item number four is our first public hearing. This is the application of Costco Wholesale Corporation for concept stage planned unit development to allow off-site parking as a principal use at 1401 Burnhaven Drive. Ms. Garrus has the report.
Thank you, Commissioners. We do have an application before you this evening. It does require a public hearing. Costco, however, is working with staff on a transportation issue related to their application. And they have asked that the Planning Commission continue this meeting to the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. And just in short, in case there is anyone online that's interested in the application, what we're looking at is really the... There is a lot that is located east of the Costco warehouse site. It's highlighted in blue here, the 14001 Burnhaven Drive. It's been the home to Pumpkin and Patch Daycare for many years. Costco purchased the property earlier this year and the daycare is actually relocated to another building in heart of the city. What the applicant would like to do is to take the building and the existing facilities down, demolish everything on that lot, and to install a new parking lot for employees. So that would be the application. The property is zone-mixed and the ordinance does allow a freestanding parking lot off-site if it's done through a planned unit development or if it's in the B3 or B4 zoning districts. So that is why they've made application for the Concept Plan PUD. And with that, I could stand for questions. Otherwise, if you want to open the public hearing and if anybody wants to provide their comments, this would be the time to do so.
Okay, maybe we'll start with... I have a question before I open it up to the rest of my Commissioners. Are you gonna... Is there gonna be a more in-depth report at the next... When we reopen the hearing in October?
Yes, there'll be a full report with all of the standard information in October.
Okay. So then I'll open, before we open up the public hearing, I'll open the questions to the Commissioners. Commissioner Timmerman?
Ms. Garrus, a quick question. This is our Burnsville Center, Center Village area. Does additional parking fit? What is envisioned for that area?
There are a couple of different things related to the Center Village vision. It would not, and we will discuss that further. However, the zoning ordinance allows it. So we've got some competing things and that will be something that we'll discuss further with the Planning Commission when this comes back to you on the 9th.
Great, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton?
So the land directly to the east is where the old fire station was, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Are they gonna be utilizing that space at all?
One of the applications does show a potential to use part of the fire station property. It does show a connection, so they wouldn't have a driveway connection to this lot, but it would be moved to the main driveway coming off on the actual fire station lot and then a connection to that. That is something that is a city council decision they need to identify. They have not made, as I'm aware, any decisions regarding what the fire station site will be used for.
Would they be purchasing that parcel?
If... Yes, that would be part of the question. If that option is pursued, they would like to purchase part or perhaps all of the parcel.
I have another question, if I may. The intersection at 140th and Burnhaven. So it was referenced in the report regarding some type of stop sign or signaling. Has there been a decision on that or is that still open to discussion?
That is what is being discussed now between the city's consulting engineers and the applicant's engineers. They have proposed putting in stop signs with the crosswalk. The warrants and the consultant for the city is recommending signalized intersection. So in order to take a look at all of those details more in depth, that's why the continuance is requested. The applicant has provided a transportation study and background information.
Any other questions from Commissioners? I saw you raise your hand.
Oh, no, I was scratching my note, sorry.
Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing at 6:40. And if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this issue, you can approach the podium and identify yourself and your address. And seeing nobody, is there anybody online or on Zoom? Okay, so we don't have anybody here for the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. Oh, I...
Continue it. Sorry.
I'm on autopilot. So I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the October 9th Planning Commission meeting.
I've moved to continue.
Second? Seconded by Commissioner Braddock. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimous. Well, this hearing will be continued at the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. Thank you, Ms. Garrus. Item number five on our agenda is also a public hearing. This is the application of Tenor Development Incorporated for a planned unit development PUD amendment for additional signage and updated signage criteria at Burnsville Marketplace located at 13901 Aldrich Avenue South. Ms. Garrus will be presenting for staff.
Ms. Madden.
Ms. Madden. Ms. Madden, I'm sorry. Ms. Madden.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. So as mentioned, this next item on the agenda is a PUD amendment related to signage at the Burnsville Marketplace Shopping Center property. So to refresh your memory on this property, this is a very large 26-acre property in our main commercial area in Burnsville, also near the Burnsville Center Village vision area. So just north of County Road 42 and west of I-35W. So the site has been developed as a shopping center for many years. The original PUD was approved in the late 80s and then has been amended a few times over the years, some for exterior updates or for new outbuildings that were to be constructed on the property. And then a number of amendments were completed in 2011 and 2012 related to signage on the property. So this amendment that is being requested this evening is also related to signage and it does include the refacing of some of the existing signs on the property to allow for a new tenant in the upper-level space. It's currently home to Best Buy and as part of the applicant's narrative, they've indicated that Best Buy will not be renewing their lease in the space and that a new tenant has been identified as Bob's Discount Furniture. So to reface the existing signs on the property, which are highlighted, it's kind of in these various circles pointed around the property, that's something that can be done administratively so long as the signs are consistent with the previous approvals. Some of the signs on the property were specifically requested and then approved as part of a PUD amendment in 2011 and 2012 for additional signage beyond what the sign ordinance would require. So refacing them, as long as they're consistent, could be done administratively. The reason that some of these amendments are to require a planned unit development amendment is there are additional new freestanding signs which are proposed as well as shown on number 12 here on the site plan, a new type of retaining wall signage proposed by the tenant. So again, some examples of the freestanding signs that exist on the property that would be refaced with new messaging from the new tenant. One of the key aspects of the planned unit development amendment is the replacement of these two smaller directional signs which currently direct traffic to the upper-level space for Best Buy. So the applicant is proposing that these two directional signs be replaced with more permanent monument signage shown here within those landscaping islands. The reason that this is requiring a deviation to the city code is because of the addition of new freestanding signs, but also due to the setback requirement for a freestanding sign. So a directional sign or an informational sign is... Does not have to meet a five-foot setback from a parking space or a drive aisle, but a permanent freestanding sign does. And in this particular location with the width of the existing landscaping island, that setback requirement would not be able to be met. So it is included as part of the deviation request for these signs to be replaced with larger... Still in an effort to provide direction and arrows to seek that rear upper-level tenant space, but a more larger freestanding sign classification. The next new type of signage which is proposed is part of the wayfinding and directional efforts of the property owner and the new tenant, which includes a mixture of types of signage. So painted signs, which are not currently allowed in the zoning ordinance, as well as more with the lettering of the name of the tenant, Bob's Discount Furniture, individual letters which would be consistent with the zoning ordinance requirements. So for benefits of the planned unit development, that the use of the tenant space as this new tenant, establishing it as a benefit to the city and retail community, it's consistent with previous PUD approvals, that the amendment would provide greater visibility for a unique space on the parcel and that the amendment would provide additional wayfinding for a site that's complicated to navigate. So as part of the applicant's narrative letter that's attached to your background report, they indicated that with the existing Best Buy tenant as well as Circuit City, who was in the space prior to Best Buy, there have been a number of complaints, both from the tenants themselves as well as from customers that are visiting the site, that it is confusing on how to navigate the site from its many entrances at such a large size to find the direction to get to that upper-level tenant space since it faces a different direction than the remainder of the tenants within the shopping center. And so as part of that, they're requesting this to assist with that wayfinding for the customer experience. So as mentioned, there are signage-related deviations to the city code to allow the additional freestanding signs on the property for the two new monument signs and to allow those two monument signs to be located within five feet of their drive aisle within that landscaping island, to allow additional wall signage above the adjacent roofline, which I apologize, I'll go back to that and show you where that is, and then to allow a new wall sign on the retaining wall to be a combination of painted chevrons and permanent signage material. So sorry that I skipped over that. So above the roofline here, you can see currently there is the existing Best Buy sign which was approved through a former PUD amendment. The applicant is proposing to upgrade the facade of this parapet and to add some additional decorative materials to raise it and increase the visibility and to add an additional sign which faces to the west of the property rather than this current one right here for Best Buy, which is the south of the property. So it's also for this additional overhead wall sign so that that visibility is from each access point to the property. So with that, staff is in support of the applicant's request for the PUD amendment. We are recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the PUD amendment for additional signage as well as the updated signage criteria for the shopping center. There are three conditions that we are including in the request. The first and second, of course, very consistent with our standard conditions for planned unit development, that the conditions and approvals of previously approved PUDs remain in full force and effect and that uses listed in the underlying zoning district as permitted or accessory are allowed in addition to the specific uses that have been outlined in this planned unit development. And of course, that no exterior signage be installed without prior issuance of a permanent sign permit. With that, I can stand for questions this evening and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Can you go back to the picture of the painted chevrons? Yeah, so they appear to be... Is that just... Are you saying that's just painted on the side of the retaining wall? Or are they... Are they like objects that are painted like the sign is painted?
So they have indicated that they'll be painted onto the retaining wall.
Okay.
And that the letters for the actual sign portion of the request will be a attached material.
Three-dimensional.
Yes, a three-dimensional, traditional wall sign material.
Because the way it appears here that they're all three-dimensional. You know, and maybe that's just the way they're painting it, you know, so it's just a red chevron with a black outline to make it look three-dimensional?
Possibly. They've indicated both in this kind of caption on their images that it's painted as well as in their signage criteria packet that they included with their application materials. So I didn't include that packet. It's attached to your report but not in the PowerPoint because the criteria packet is an administrative approval.
Okay, mainly just a point of clarification. Just trying to clarify that it looks three-dimensional. Questions from Commissioners for Ms. Madden? Commissioner Timmerman?
I had the same question, actually, Chair Wad, about the rendering of that image. I mean, I'm curious about that access and that bridge. Is that owned by the property owner?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, they can do what they want with it if it were to come to cleaning or upkeep or things like that or if the letters faded and things like that. It's not like it's a city bridge or anything.
That's correct, yes. And the same maintenance requirements for a sign would apply to all wall signage on the property.
Okay. Yeah, frankly, I think it's a great idea. I think getting more cars up there using that space. It's been an underutilized property for 15 years now, so I think it'd be great to get a new business in there. Direct traffic, I think it's a pretty nice proposal and I liked the rendering of that top floor with the new design there too. So I like it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hamilton?
All right, so there's also access from 42.
That's correct.
Are they planning any signage at 42?
Yes, so they will be replacing a Best Buy sign that is off of 42. They kind of showed their rendering here of the existing Best Buy sign and how it would be transferred over. So this sign right here is the County Road 42 monument that is shown right here on the plan. So this is County Road 42.
Right.
That would be on the right. And so they do have that separate access. So they have the upper part of that overpass and they have the under part of the overpass all on their property. But yes, they would be at.
Same size? Same size?
Same size to just replace it with the new messaging.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing at 6:52. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this item, please approach the podium. Nobody is approaching the podium. Is there anybody on Zoom or on the phone?
Nope.
Okay, well, seeing no public testimony, we'll close the public hearing at 6:53. Are there any further questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Wallace?
No further questions, but if there are none, I think it's a pretty straightforward recommendation that I'll be happy to...
I would love to entertain a motion.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of a PUD amendment for additional signage and updated signage criteria at Burnsville Marketplace subject to the following three conditions.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Braddock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. So this will be heard at the city council meeting on their consent agenda.
September 19th.
September 19th. Thank you. We'll move on to item number six. This is a public hearing for the application of Collaborative Design Group for a Planned Unit Development Amendment for Religious Institution Use and Joint Parking Agreement located at 121 1916th Avenue South. Also presenting, Ms. Madden.
Thank you. So as mentioned, this last item on our agenda is another public hearing within a planned unit development. So this site, it's owned B3 and is part of the Happy Commercial Park Planned Unit Development. So this particular development was established in 1979 as a commercial subdivision and it, at that time, included a variety of uses for office. There were commercial and retail uses, restaurant uses proposed. And then in 1985, following kind of six years of that, we're not. All of the buildings had yet been constructed. The developer came back in to establish the commercial park as more of an office park. And so you can see in this building and some of the surrounding ones that primarily they've been developed as traditional office buildings typical for that time period. So this building was constructed in 1980 as an office occupancy building with a warehouse and loading dock area. So it did function as that for the first few years, but in 1994, a permit was issued to Destiny Christian Center for a remodel of the building and it did include their sanctuary space as assembly space for a religious group. In 1995, the city code was amended to allow places of religious assembly as a conditional use in the B2 zoning district, which carried forward to the B3 zoning district. So the use is considered legally non-conforming in this current space. The building was purchased by Destiny Christian Center, who did complete a few minor remodels over the years, some expansion into the space. We do have a certificate of occupancy on file for Destiny Christian Center from 2003. And then in the later portion of the 2000s and into the 2010s, let's say, there were some changes within the building that occurred without a building permit. And so in 2018, the owner applied for a remodel of the building to allow a... It's what's called Gateway STEM Academy. They are a charter school that is currently in the north portion of the building to occupy a portion of the building Monday through Friday as part of general maybe business hour uses. So the school itself, at that time, was approved as the building permit as a permitted use within the B3 zoning district. The permit was issued with a clarification that Destiny Church, that use in the south portion of the building, was non-conforming and that any expansion into a greater portion of the building would be an expansion of that non-conforming use. And at that time, a conditional use permit, or in this particular case, because it's a planned unit development, a PUD amendment should be applied for. So in the fall of 2022, the building was sold to the current owner, who Collaborative Design Group is a representative for. And they began meeting with staff immediately to talk about the changes they'd like to make to the building and what permits would be necessary. As part of that, we directed them that for the remodels that they wanted to do and growth in the space, that they should apply for this PUD amendment. And we would discuss the parking counts at that time to see if the site could be compliant with what the city code would require for parking minimums. So that's the application that is before you this evening for this building. So you can see here, as I was mentioning, it's about split between the north portion and the south portion of the building. So north is this way, on the left of your screen, kind of showing the Gateway STEM Academy use, which is not included as part of this application this evening. What is included is Alticon Center, which is the new owner of the building, who leases the space to the charter school. And they have applied for the PUD amendment to allow that religious institution use, which is a listed conditional use in the B3 zoning district, as a permitted use within their planned unit development, to be able to remodel the space and grow into portions of the space not previously occupied by an assembly use, as well as to request a joint parking agreement with the neighboring property within the planned unit development for shared leased parking space. So you can see here, they're outlining the existing parking on the property, which does include a mixture of parallel parking spaces along the perimeter of the parking lot as well as internal parking. This does total 81 parking spaces. So shown here is the overall exiting and life safety plan, the main floor plan of the main level of the building. There are upper-level spaces, which I'll show you in a moment. So you can see here, this is the existing main assembly space of the building. So this is generally to remain in its same form as what was previously part of the permit approvals for the former owner, Destiny Christian Center. So the areas which are proposed to be increased or expanded into for this are... There is this location right here, it's a little blurry on your screen. This would be a prayer room area. There is this area right here, the evolution, evolution area. There's a kitchen. evolution, evolution area. There's a kitchen area, shown to be remodeled here, if you can see on my mouse. And then, to quickly go to the second level, future expansion in the upper level of the space, showing an additional prayer area, as well as there will be changes for the Gateway STEM Academy in the future. This has shown us a future phase for their tenant, also in the upper level, that would come along with this elevator use here. So as mentioned, so they currently are owners in the space and able to occupy their previous use that was permitted through the variety of permits from 1994 to the present. And what they're requesting this evening is an amendment because they are changing some of the space interior for their assembly use. So as part of the planned unit development request, benefits to the PUD are that the proposed amendment will allow the existing legally non-conforming use to be allowed in conformance with the current zoning ordinance and with the PUD, and that the proposed parking lease allows for additional parking for the existing uses without reducing the green space on the property to add in more hard surface. Deviations that are requested this evening, there are the base requests of the planned unit development to allow the religious institution use within the planned unit development. As mentioned, this is a conditional use in the underlying zoning district. There's a requested reduction in parking requirements from 262 spaces to 151 spaces, which staff is supportive of with conditions that I'll get to shortly in the report, and then to allow that joint parking agreement through a parking lease with the neighboring property within the planned unit development. So for the parking requirements, the existing property does have 81 parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing 70 off-site spaces through a parking lease. So that property, to go back, so it would be to the west of the property, but on the bottom of the screen. So you can see a portion of the spaces would be right here across 16th Avenue, and 70 spaces to lease from that property owner. And additional images of their parking lease are attached to your background report. So the applicant has stated that the two uses, the religious institution and the school that exists within the building, are operating at differing peak times, and have stated in their narrative letter and in their development review comment responses that the intent is for any special events, such as a wedding or funeral or large occupancy events, to take place outside of school hours or traditional business hours. This is also something that is identified in the drafted lease agreement, which they have provided to the city, showing that they would be able to lease these spaces as part of any special events or larger overflow services. So the parking itself for the building is calculated by the occupant load of the assembly spaces within the building and not by fixed seats. So there are two ways to calculate parking for religious institution in our parking schedule. And in this particular case, there are no fixed seats in the space, so we must calculate that by the occupant load. So the applicant's currently stating that their current membership at their existing location, which they have in South Minneapolis, is approximately 170 members. They do anticipate some growth to about 350 members by 2028. The staff concerns with the application are related to the parking access and circulation around the property. So the condition that staff is recommending is that a traffic management plan with some of the standard operating procedures of how any direction of traffic during a special event or larger surface would be provided, and that be provided to the city prior to any permits for work on the site to do the remodels into their space. So this, examples of what this could be, there has been used in previous conditional use permits for religious institutions that have had multiple parking areas where they would have had to direct traffic. An example on a larger scale is the Bereen Baptist Church addition, which was off of County Road 42 East. And that included a traffic management plan on how the property owners would help to direct traffic in the event that there was a larger event. So this is something that the city is including as a condition of approval on the PUD amendment. Oh, and here, I had a plan for it after all. So showing the overall, this is a number of the buildings that are within the same planned unit development, and shows, highlighted here in white, the 70 leased spaces that are across the street. This property is within the same Happy Commercial Park Planned Unit Development, but owned by a different property owner. So the spaces would be used during non-business hours and weekends. And there's a condition that the parking agreement be recorded on the properties with Dakota County. So in order to have a joint parking agreement, there are two ways that it can be done per our parking ordinance. One of them is that the legal agreement be separate and filed on both properties, and the other is that the two property owners jointly apply for the conditional use permit or PUD amendment to file it. So we have put a condition on it that the agreement that they've provided us, that they've already been able to negotiate with their property owner, be recorded with Dakota County. And there's an additional condition that should that be terminated and no longer available for the use, that the property owner provide evidence that parking for all uses within the building can be provided on the site, or that they apply for a PUD amendment to request further approval of a new joint parking agreement, or approval of the parking as it stands, and provide the evidence at that time for meeting the minimum parking standards. Also included, just so you know, are some conditions on the planned unit development are related to some of the signage that they have shown in its preliminary form. So they are showing a improvement to the existing kind of post-free standing sign that's on the property to something of a more permanent monument style, which is good and is more consistent with what the ordinance would require for a freestanding sign. This is still in preliminary form, and they're showing it in this location right here. There is a little bit more room for them to move it over, so there are conditions included with this report, that that sign be moved to be consistent with the five-foot setback from a parking space or drive aisle. There is room on the property for them to be able to be consistent with setbacks and still be visible for their freestanding sign, as well as signage-related conditions that the wall signs meet construction standards of the zoning ordinance, and that no permanent signs be issued without the permanent sign permit application. So for staff considerations, so as mentioned, there are some concerns with access to the property from public streets, and that the, there's a potential for the overflow parking, which is needed, that could impact public safety vehicle access to and around the site, if that was needed or necessary as part of an event or in the area during an event. So public safety staff is supportive of the condition to require a traffic management plan to be provided to us and approved by the city. And as mentioned, this is something that has been a tool that's been utilized for previous religious institutions through the CUP process, where we're reviewing parking and access concerns. And as mentioned, the proposed use, the religious institution use, is a conditional use in the underlying B3 zoning district. The use itself has been approved in the space back in 1994, and that adjacent school use that is a tenant in the building has been in place beginning with that permit approval in 2018. Standard conditions are included with this planned unit development, that the PUD remain in full use and effect from previous approvals, and that underlying uses can be considered as permitted uses within the planned unit development here. And as mentioned, there are conditions related to the signage, as the signage plans are preliminary, and those permanent sign permits would be applied for at a later date through the typical staff review and administrative process. So staff overall is recommending approval of the application, subject to eight conditions listed here. So as mentioned, the first two conditions are standard planned unit development conditions, which note that the conditions and approvals of previous planned unit developments remain in full force and effect, and that those uses that are listed as permitted or accessory could be allowed in addition to the specific uses that are outlined within this planned unit development. There are three of those mentioned conditions related to signage, that the wall sign plans be revised to meet construction requirements of the zoning ordinance, that the freestanding sign location be revised to meet the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance, and that no exterior signs be installed without prior issuance of a permanent sign permit. And then, these last three conditions are related to the parking and access on the property. So number six is that the property owner provide proof of the recorded legal instrument for the joint parking facility prior to building permit issuance for this expansion of the religious institution use, and that if the parking lease is terminated and no longer available for use, that the property owner provide evidence that parking for all uses can be provided or apply for a PUD amendment to request approval of an additional joint parking agreement to accommodate the required parking standards for the site and the uses on the site. And then lastly, the condition for the traffic management plan that be provided to the city for review prior to issuance of any building permits on the site. And then, an example of how that will indicate how the applicant will provide event traffic management and parking and access assistance for visitors to the site during large events. So with that, I can stand for questions this evening. We do have members of the applicant team available in the audience to answer any questions if necessary, and this will be a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Excellent presentation. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Wallace?
Yes, Ms. Madden, could you go back to the overview picture of the building?
The floor plan or the site?
Of the site, the actual visual picture? Like the drone picture of it?
Oh, of this? Or are we going all the way back to this?
Yes, that one. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't know what slide number. It appears to me that there are no sidewalks or crosswalks along where that overflow parking would be. And so just as a point of concern for the safety of the public that would have to cross the road, is that also then included in that traffic management plan then, to either increase sidewalks on the site, or the crosswalks, just so it is safe for pedestrians?
So it isn't included in the traffic management plan explicitly to install new improvements? What would be included is the use of the property owner's resources to direct, like provide a traffic direction or pedestrian direction services. So this sidewalk that is on 122nd here, it is, you know, a legal pedestrian crossing, but it is, how you can see it in this photo, is its current state, and there are no city planned improvements for that striping. Now, if there are... On their own property, they have the ability to make improvements, but the city is not, at this time, suggesting any improvements to the right-of-way portion of the street.
Because my biggest concern is, obviously, if people are going to the overflow parking and have to cross the street, the chances are they're not going to walk away from the building access to make it to the sidewalk, to go across the crosswalk legally and safely to get to the other side. So chances are, people would be going through, like, the parking entrances and going across the middle of the street. And so my concern is just for the safety of the pedestrians, that either, if that's the case, that some type of additional crosswalk or pedestrian crossing signage or something be utilized, just for the sheer safety of both drivers and the pedestrians.
So the inclusion of an additional condition which addressed those concerns is something that you have the ability to impose on the application. So that is something that, if the language can be kind of agreed upon in consensus by the planning commissioners, that could be incorporated into the conditions of approval of this request, if you so choose.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would like to include an additional condition that at least does additional research then for an additional crosswalk or access for pedestrians from the overflow parking.
And just to understand the process, in the, if the traffic management plan, you, and this is what you just, is this what you just said, that the traffic management plan really is more about how are you, how are you going to direct traffic? It doesn't necessarily include stop signs or additional walkways. It's, how are you, or could that be part of the traffic management?
It could be part of the traffic management plan, on their own property, on what they could provide as changes. But the intent is for the actionable items, like operating procedures, what the property owner would do in the case of an event. Here is how I would direct traffic. Here is who we would place on the property to direct all modes of traffic in these different directions. Or here is who we would hire if we were to hire someone to do that, things like that. So the intent is for the traffic management plan to be provided to the city, and that as part of the permit approval process, we would approve that traffic management plan, the staff development review committee, which consists of the, you know, building, planning, engineering, fire, and police departments would approve that traffic management plan.
Okay, Commissioner Wallace?
I'd like to amend my last recommendation to make that as a sub-bullet under the current traffic management plan, just to be addressed during that same piece, then.
Okay, so right now, this says, "A traffic management plan shall be provided to the city for review prior to the issuance of any building permits on the site. The traffic management plan shall provide guidelines for standard operating procedures for parking access during large events. Traffic management plan shall indicate how the applicant will provide event, traffic management, and parking and access assistance for visitors to the site." And...
So as a sub-bullet to number eight?
Yep.
I feel would be appropriate.
So what do you want to add as a sub-bullet?
That there will be additional research as to a crosswalk and/or signage to cross the street for pedestrian access.
Signage for pedestrian, for pedestrian, I'm writing this down as quickly as I can, so bear with me.
And I look for further recommendations, if need be, on the verbiage.
Yeah. So I'm going to ask a question. I'm not sure how often, you know, there is a big event that would require traffic management solution? And is it, is, you know, depending on the size and frequency, it may, you know, if it's a big, if it's a big deal often, then we want to have some sort of infrastructure in place. And if it's an occasional, it's a big deal, but occasional, a few times a year, then can it be handled by, you know, hiring people to direct traffic, and whether it's police or, you know, that's, that's sort of a thing. And I don't know the answer, I'm just asking the question.
Go ahead, Ms. Garros.
I think if the planning commission is interested in that, you could just simply add that you would like the traffic management plan to also review if there's a need for additional pedestrian crossings, and that can be done. That's something exactly that we're doing with the Costco application now, and I know that we have looked at it for other similar types of applications. So it's really including an analysis based on the traffic that's occurring out there, based on what's proposed or anticipated, and then what, if any, improvements would be needed.
So moved.
Right, that's essentially what you said, Commissioner Wallace, to additional research into a crosswalk or signage from pedestrian access. Okay, so in terms of procedure, are we, do we have a little sub-vote on whether we add this additional item to bullet number eight?
So when a motion is made, and later in the evening, it could be, you know, motion to approve, you know, as listed, with the additional condition requiring...
Okay, we'll have a little more, we'll have a little more discussion about it after we close this, get to a public hearing, and then have another second round of discussion prior to issuing a motion.
Yes.
Perfect. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Braddock?
I don't see any, I see a maintenance clause in the agreement, but I don't see any snow management planning for either of the parking areas. Has there been any discussion? Do we know what the plan is, and who's responsible for that across the street, too? So I don't have that information. I would defer... I would defer that question to the applicant if they have that available to them. I know within the terms of the parking lease, it indicates when the parking lease would be utilized. The current property owner does still maintain their permanent ownership and their existing agreements for the office warehouse building next door.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Hamilton?
What happens if the growth continues and they exceed the 150 spaces? Where, is there on-street parking on 16th? Do they have to come up with another agreement to utilize other properties?
So that is part of the concern with the parking lease and why there's a condition that if the parking lease is terminated, that additional approvals would be required through the planned unit development process. In addition, in the event of every building permit that we receive on the property, the parking would be reevaluated based on the current occupant load and count. Now that is based on not their membership, that is based on the occupant load of the assembly spaces in the building. That is how the parking would be calculated. So as their membership, the reason that their membership numbers were provided as part of the applicant's narrative was to show that if they were to calculate their parking based on the number of seats instead of on the occupant load of the room, that the ordinance for fixed seating would actually require less parking minimums than the occupant load. So they were providing that information of their own, for their own justification of showing how they feel that they, their parking could be reduced because of their known membership levels. That does not account for any increases of those membership levels over time.
For special events or?
For special events. So, and for those, we are, that's why the parking count in this particular case, without the fixed seating, is going by the occupant load of the space for one parking space per three in the occupant load.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will move to the public hearing session, section of this. We'll open the public hearing at 7:22. And if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this matter, please approach the podium. Can you state your name and your address, please, for the record?
My name is Elizabeth McCullough. I'm the architect of record for the client for the mosque. And my address is 5571 Jenny Lane, White Bear Lake. Good evening. A couple of things just want to, I had a couple of questions. And one of them is regarding marking of sidewalks on public streets, which usually, I don't recall ever having done that for a client on a public way. So is the commission suggesting that we would actually add sidewalk markings to one of the public streets?
My recommendation was to have something included in that just for the overflow parking situation. As people legally would have to go down to the corner, cross, and go back. As we know, as most people and for public safety purposes, will go from the one exit to the other entrance. So that's why I added that as a recommendation to be analyzed.
Okay. I would, I think that's a great idea, having a sidewalk crossing. I just am hesitant to say that that should fall on one building owner to do that crosswalk. I think we would be highly in supportive of that, supportive of that. I also think, given your point about shortest distance and walking from door to door, and I am in agreement, that's exactly what's going to happen. Actually, the entrance into the adjacent parking and the entrance into gateway happened to be right across from each other. So if the city was so inclined to put in a crosswalk, I would think that would be the place that would be the most obvious. Additionally, I think, as Sarah and I have discussed, and she's been extremely helpful, you guys are really lucky to have her. She's been really helpful in making sure the client and myself understand what we need to do. But one of those conversations, and my interpretation, and I, so I'd like some clarification, I think, on our traffic plan for any large gathering is, our thought would be that it would be things like cones to come out. And so we would be coning the area where we would be asking people to cross as a directional device. Also having people from the religious use, the owner, actually flagging. So we would have somebody standing out flagging as people were going across. And I don't know if that's also a consideration and if that helps with your concerns about people crossing, and crossing not in a good spot, I agree, so yeah.
I think it's all, can be part of the analysis part.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, commissioners, so that is the intent of the traffic management plan, is that the owner would provide their, like essentially their to-do list of what they would do during a special event. And that would include pedestrian safety, directional work. And they would show us how they would provide that so that we could see, you know, here now we know the plan in the event of an event, or something like that. So my understanding with the condition is that, yes, there might be additional research into safe pedestrian crossing, I would say, planning, as in how the owner would add that into their operating procedures for pedestrian crossing. The city has not, in review of this application, suggesting any new striping on that existing legal crosswalk where the sidewalk at that intersection. And then the city has not been in support in previous applications across the city for a mid-street crossing. That's not something the city would install where those two driveways intersect. So there have been requests for that from other uses in the city, including religious institution uses, where that has not been supported by the city to install a separate, permanent sidewalk mid-block. So that, that isn't something that the city would suggest as part of this application. It's not what's proposed. Go ahead, Ms. Garros.
What would happen is that, I think Commissioner Wallace has stated this, but it's basically a review that the city engineering would do with our traffic consultant. And if there, we have to look at warrants, if it's warranted, meeting state requirements, all of those types of things. So I think it is more just a review, taking a look at what you anticipate, you know, those occupancies might be, and then taking a look. And perhaps just through the study, there are some suggestions that they can bring forward as to how to, how to do that.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And then the snow removal question. So currently, those, both sites, both the site that we would be using, that we're going to lease spaces from, and our site are, have their own snow maintenance that's happening on an ongoing basis. And those, the building across the street is occupied. I don't know to what extent, but I, I think it's over 50%. So they have full occupancy, so they're keeping that site clean. We are keeping our site clean right now in general. We have school, so the, you know, the schools are really very careful about the snow removal. So the snow removal is happening. I don't envision any changes to that. And because of that, we did not do a, any kind of plan. It's sort of already in place, so. And then lastly, and this is actually in our, in our submittal about how many members and how we are calculating, and Sarah did a really good job of saying that the calculation is based on occupancy of the space. That being said, sometimes those occupancies in the large spaces get just out of control with how many people could actually fit in that space, which is 653, I think. So we have 170 members in the, in the institution. Granted, there could be that many people, there could be 650 people in there, but that's not the norm. With the parking spaces we have on-site and the additional parking spaces next door, we could actually grow this institution to almost 500. I think it's 463 or something on that line. Don't have a calculation right with me. So there's a tremendous amount of growth available until we actually exceed the parking that is on-site. And right now, the current plan for, for growth, there are other institutions close that are taking up some of this population. And so as we're looking at this, it does not appear anyway right now that we are going to even come close to exceeding that parking for, for a minimum of five years, we would be looking. And that, we still have the occupancy, but I want to make clear that we know we are, that we are really under what we think, what we know for the, for the institution as far as how many members they have now. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? No additional questions. Thank you, thank you very much. And as Ms. Madden said, that you were, got staff involvement early in the process, and I think we all appreciate that, that makes it easier and better for everyone. So thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this? Hi, please state your name and your address. Welcome.
I'm Mary Heinz. I live at 1825 East 122nd Street, right across from the institution. And I'm really glad to hear that the parking is being addressed. Where, I live in the Covington Point Town home area. And right across from our second driveway that's west of 11, there's three drives that converge kind of in the same spot. And I know with, with Baptist church, sometimes when they have big functions, people park on the street. And so my concern was if people start parking on the street by the entrances, it's going to be like blind spots. So that was my concern. So I'm glad that's being addressed. So that was my main concern.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom or online that wants to address this?
Not that I see.
Seeing no additional commentary, we will close the public hearing at 7:32. And I'll open the floor for discussion to the commissioners. Any additional discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman?
To Commissioner Wallace's motion that's on the table, I, I mean, I want to comment that 100, or sorry, that 16th Avenue is a fairly light traffic road throughout the day. During events, obviously more cars. I think depending on time of day, you know, you're going to be looking at different safety concerns. I want to, you know, share your concern. I think this planning commission has always put safety first, and I appreciate that. That being said, to the applicant, you know, this isn't a full-fledged traffic study. I think Ms. Garros did a good job of describing it's, frankly, it's, it's pretty, it's easy compared to some of the red tape you might have to go through for an actual traffic study. I like the thoughts that you already have about the larger events, coning, things like that. So I think you'll, you'll have a fairly, fairly straightforward time going through that. That being said, I support Commissioner Wallace's motion. I think, you know, it should be part of the conversation. It sounds like Ms. Madden said that the city is, is not inclined to put a crosswalk in there, which makes sense. But at least being aware of what those safety concerns are. So I do support Commissioner Wallace's motion. I support this project. I support the leasing of the property adjacent. I hope that in five years or less you do come back, and, you know, this is a booming institution, and you do have to look at some more parking, if that's what you want. I think most institutions are looking for that. But, but yeah, best of luck. I think it's, to me, anyway, it's palatable.
Thank you, Commissioner Timmerman. I'm going to pose a question. Does the, the concern that you're bringing up, Commissioner Wallace, is it covered under the point number eight as it's written? Or do we need to add additional language about it?
I would still include it in as more of an 8A sub-bullet, and very similar to what Ms. Garros has addressed.
Okay. And Ms. Garros, did you, do you, did you write down what this 8A sub-bullet is? Or, because we need to write it down so it can become part of the official record.
I think you could just add something to the effect that the traffic management plan, or that the site also be reviewed for pedestrian crossings and any possible improvements or things that can be done to ensure safety.
Say that again, site be reviewed for pedestrian?
Yep, for pedestrian crossings.
Crossings. And?
And then the findings can be incorporated into their traffic plan that they're putting together.
Okay.
I would note, too, that, so the second sentence and the number eight condition, so says the traffic management plan shall provide guidelines for standard operating procedures for parking and access during large events. You could say parking, comma, access, and pedestrian safety and crossings.
I like that. Does the rest of the commission like that? Is that acceptable to you?
I will amend my motion to include those additional words in eight as is currently written.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, so your, your motion is to approve with the, with the additional condition that you...
With the additional verbiage added to eight was my motion to be then seconded.
Okay, so now we've approved, we've approved the recommendation. And can you, just to make it official, can you read the?
Oh, well, I was making the motion just for number eight amendment, but I can make the full motion if you like.
I think you make the full emotion with this, with this added item, and then we'll vote on that.
We have to vote on the, we have to vote on his first motion.
Do we have to vote on the, on the addition of this item?
Or the amendment to eight?
You'd have to vote on the additional amendment.
Yep, because it's, the motion's been made, yep.
Okay. Motion, seconded. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Now I would, let, Commissioner Wallace?
I'd like to recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the planned unit development amendment for a religious institution use and joint parking agreement located at 12119 16th Avenue South, subject to the following eight conditions, including the amendment to number eight.
Second?
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Timmerman. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for helping me get through that.
Good team effort.
The next item on our agenda, item number seven, is updates. Are there any updates from, I'm going to go, any updates from commissioners? Seeing none, are there any updates from staff?
Yes, so obviously our big update today is that we sworn a new planning commissioner this evening. Welcome, Commissioner Hamilton. So if you've been paying attention to the city council agendas, with Commissioner Wallace's resignation from the planning commission, Al Anderson, who currently serves on the economic development commission, has been appointed to the new planning commission alternate position to replace Commissioner Wallace. And his first meeting will be the first planning commission meeting in October as part of the planning commission. Additional updates on ongoing items with the planning commission? So I've been trying to provide updates periodically about the zoning code update. And so we've received the clearance to kind of move back forward with the project. So you should be receiving something by email, likely in the beginning of October, which would be the opening of the next public comment period for the residential drafted chapter. Before that happens, you'll receive some email communications from Regina Dean, our Assistant Community Development Director. our assistant community development director, informing all of our volunteer commissions of what's been decided on that. So I would say stay tuned for communication on that. As of right now, we do not have any items currently scheduled for the next September planning commission meeting. So, so I would say watch your inbox to see, but at this moment, it does appear that that meeting will be canceled. So your next planning commission meeting will be Monday, October 9, Canadian Thanksgiving.
Good to know. Commissioner Wallace?
Yes. With that stated update, if we are definitely going to cancel September 25th, I would still like to propose an outing of my fellow commissioners and staff. Do we have to put anything out publicly to say we're getting together for unofficial business?
Yes, we do. And we can post that if a location is decided on. We would just have to post it on the city's, I think, website and on the bulletin board that there will be an informal meeting of planning commissioners and the location.
Yeah. You want to pick the spot now?
I, I think last time we gathered for an unofficial outing was Clive's. And I think, you know, it's a good central location, if that works for both my fellow commissioners and staff.
Sure. And on, on the 25th, that's what you're hoping for?
Yes. I, in case something comes up, or if it doesn't come up, while we still have an agenda.
All right. Yes, we will make that noted and send out an email to all of the commissioners.
Excellent.
So if we are skipping the 9/25 official planning commission meeting, that means this is your last commission, your planning commission meeting. Commissioner Wallace, I want to thank you for your service and just express how much I've enjoyed working with you up here.
Thank you very much. It's definitely been an honor and a privilege to serve with my fellow commissioners and staff. Unfortunately, it's only been a little over two years. I was looking for some additional time, but it's truly been an experience. Definitely encourage the general public to volunteer in their community. I've learned a lot over the years on the several, several commissions I've been on with both the city and the county. And it, it is definitely heartfelt to say I have appreciated my time. And it's with mixed emotions that I'm leaving, but I'm moving to Savage, so I'll be right next door. And maybe get on their planning commission and maybe have future communications back and forth somehow. But no, truly, thank you all very much. I've truly appreciated it. And you're all great people. So, thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Wallace, going out strong.
I'll make a motion to adjourn on my potentially final meeting.
Excellent. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.